Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 23rd, 2024 School Board Meeting and Public Hearing. Want to call this meeting officially to order and send it over to Ms. Foreman for our district's vision and introduction and invocation.
Our, the district's vision is the School District of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And I would like to introduce Pastor Jonathan Bachmann, who is chaplain at, I think, just about every college in the district practically. So, and down in Sarasota. So, we're happy to have you here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everybody will rise.
Please join me in prayer. Good and loving God, you are the sovereign creator of the universe, our redeemer and our sustainer. Indeed, you are the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings and for your faithfulness to us throughout the past months and years. As we gather for this school board meeting, we seek your wisdom and guidance as preparations and plans are made for the upcoming school year. Help us to engage in meaningful conversation, allow all who are here to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Grant us unity of purpose and open hearts to understand one another. Fill us with your grace as decisions are made that affect the students, staff, faculty, and the community of Manatee County. May our words and actions reflect your love and grace. And continue to remind us that all that's done here today, all that is accomplished, is for the pursuit of truth, for your glory, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. All right, let's move to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on July 23rd, 2024 Agenda, updated on July 22nd, 2024, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. And we're going to need to vote manually, because I'm not in the granicus yet. So, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those, any opposed? None? carries five zero. Approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong.
Good evening, chairman and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes of the following school board meetings. The May 24th, 2024 School Board Workshop, the May 28th, 2024 School Board Meeting, the June 11th, 2024 School Board Meeting, the June 13th, 2024 School Board Workshop, the June 25th, 2024 School Board Meeting, and the June 27th, 2024 School Board Workshop.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody on the agenda, or excuse me, the approval of the minutes? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on granicus. I'm in. Ms. Foreman's out.
Nothing showing up.
It's showing her as a mover.
Are you a yea or nay?
I'm a yea.
All right. Passes five to zero. Item number seven, recognitions, Mr. Barber, with the Brayton River Elementary Everglades Champion.
Thank you, Mr. Board Chair, board members, and superintendent. I don't know about y'all, but I know for many of us, it seems like the new school year is already here. You know, it's coming really fast. We're excited about it. Everybody's working hard to do what we need to do to be ready for our students to show up on the first day, and I know everybody up here is doing that. So, it's a special recognition in the midst of the summer here to be able to recognize our schools for accomplishing something that has never been done in our district. This is a new award for us, and so I think you're going to enjoy hearing a little bit about it. To tell us more about it, to introduce our guest is Amber Platauski. She's curriculum coordinator for science in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Thank you, Board Chair, Mr. Choat, school board members, and Superintendent Weisong, for the opportunity to be here this evening to recognize Brayden River Elementary School as a gold level champion school with the Everglades Foundation. Our district has been working with the Everglades Foundation for the past several years to build student understanding and appreciation for Florida's important ecosystems through hands-on experience and science literacy. I would like to welcome the Everglades Literacy Program Coordinator, who will talk briefly about the work that Brayden River Elementary has done in the past year to achieve this recognition. Please welcome Ms. Tate Vangelo.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for having me. It is my distinct pleasure to be here tonight, presenting our very first Everglades Champion School in Manatee County. We are so excited to be working with the district over the last few years. And our first school is Brayden River Elementary School of Innovation. These teachers have worked extremely hard over the last year to earn this honor. Last year, they chose voluntarily over the summer to participate in professional development to gain this content knowledge about Florida ecosystems, so they could bring this to life for their students. 100% of their students have engaged with our free Everglades Literacy Toolkit lessons, field trips, and interdisciplinary activities to really bring this learning to life for their students. On top of that, the teachers worked hard to transform their campus during Everglades Week to be able to feature different Florida habitats and plants and animals, so students really felt like they were immersed in that habitat. They had Everglades Ambassador students that educated their peers on the importance of protecting ecosystems here locally through their school new system. On top of that, on top of earning a gold level recognition, which is pretty rare their first year as a champion school, they also earned our Rookie of the Year for their momentum and success they had in their first year. So, we are so proud to present this award to them this year. Congratulations, and we look forward to the continued partnership with you guys as we work to empower and educate our next generation of environmental stewards here in Manatee County. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the staff at Brayden River Elementary, we would like to thank the school board on recognizing our school for achieving the gold level champion status and Rookie of the Year Award from the Everglades Foundation. This foundation plays a vital role in preserving the Everglades and educating the greater Florida community. To become a gold level champion school, the educators at our BRE used our project-based learning approach to create rich learning opportunities for a student to take action and become ambassadors themselves. As we continue our efforts in creating optimal learning opportunities for our students, we will remain focused on ways to continually improve our local and greater community. Thank you again for your continued support of our school.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's awesome.
All right. So, as I said, it was very nice to have one of our schools here and receive a special, a special award that, as I said, our district had never received before. So, opened some new doors. So, you guys come on down and spread around, you know. This next award is a little bit different, and it speaks to the partnerships that we have in not only Manatee County, but, you know, this area. And it involves the Local American Heart Association, as well as HCA Healthcare with representatives here from Blake Hospital, which is part of the HCA Healthcare Network, and also Doctors Hospital in Sarasota. So, to tell us more about this wonderful contribution to our school district is Christine Aristide from, she's the Senior Development Director of the American Heart Association. So, Christine.
He said he was going to screw up that name, but he did not at all. So, give him a lot of credit. Thank you, and thank you for having me back. It's nice to see everyone again. We are here to create a nation of lifesavers, and we start this by the students of Manatee County. Over 350,000 people have a cardiac arrest outside of a hospital every year, and only 10% survive. And this is because they are not getting timely CPR. I think many of you may be aware, or maybe you're not. All ninth and 11th grade students in the state of Florida are required to take CPR as part of their school curriculum. This is part of the advocacy work that the American Heart Association has done. We are teaching students essential life goals, and we want to be able to teach them life-saving measures as well. We can't do what we do without the partners like HCA Florida Healthcare to be able to provide the kits to do good quality CPR training with our students. And so, they are donating to the school's board. These are 10 CPR kits. You are the safest people in the entire world. You have all of the health.
Could you hang around?
With all the AEDs and everything, so you want them here. So, they are donating, and the kit that's here, it's 10 mannequins where they can practice. There are 10 AED simulators. There are first aid curriculum, all within this contained. It will train thousands of students in Manatee County, and we are very grateful to HCA Florida Healthcare for providing this great quality training to your students. And I'm going to have Kelly come on up and speak for a couple of minutes. Kelly Malloy, please.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for having us and letting us participate with your school board. So, I'm Kelly Malloy. I'm the chief operating officer at Doctors of Sarasota. And with me, I'm proud to have Sonya Hayes, who's our manager of emergency services, at our freestanding located rate off State Road 70. And also Priscilla is the manager of the CVICU at Blake Hospital. So, I'm glad that they were able to come with me. So, everyone knows that when CPR is done correctly, the people stand a chance of double or triple their ability and their chances of survival. So, when a patient in cardiac arrest comes to our emergency room, and they've already had the benefit of CPR, the chances of survival are much stronger. So, we're excited to be part of this donation with American Heart, so that our young people in our community can learn the value and how to do CPR well and increase the chances of survival within our community. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What's the song, the song Staying Alive, right?
That's right, Staying Alive. That's the beat.
There are also some Taylor Swift songs if you're young and cold.
Ah, I don't need that.
I am with you on that. Staying Alive is the right.
I've seen The Office.
Yeah, the Bee Gees, Staying Alive.
So, it's 120 beats per minute.
Yeah.
And you, first thing you do is you call 911. Then you try to get an AED. I don't know if you guys have one here? That's something to look into. I go to most businesses and ask the question, "Do you have an AED?" And I get, "That's a great question. Have you trained your staff on how to do CPR?" That's another great question. So, these students are leading the way, and now they have lifelong education on how to do CPR and to be able to teach others. So, it's a great skill to teach young, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
So much.
We appreciate that.
I can see students naming those.
Yeah, right?
I can see our students naming each one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving on to item number eight, public comments. We do have one public comment this evening. Marie Masfer, if you want to come on down.
Here I am again. Hello, board. And thank you for time to speak publicly. My name is Marie Masfer. I live here in Braydington. I'm here again because we are facing more book challenges. And so, I'm pointing out once again, and this will be of interest to you, sir, that the district still does not meet state law in that it does not provide a process for the community and parents. So, our parents' rights in Manatee County are being violated by not having a committee to review the books in question. There are only four members of our community, and the last time I count, there are thousands of parents in our community that are not being represented. So, the people challenging the books are minuscule compared to the parents and children affected by the decisions. The DOE clips that I sent you in your email, and anyone listening, if you will please see the, I asked them to be posted publicly with the minutes. The Board of Education has said that state laws 1557 and 1069 do not apply to school libraries, and yet they are still being applied in Manatee County. The Equality Florida attack, well, not attack. They won in a decision for against the Don't Say Gay law, which actually changed what classrooms can do in this next school year, but yet that stands. Also, you have books that are presented as pornography, and that's why they were removed, and they violate 847.012. The Miller Test still stands in the state of Florida, and that is a decision from 1973. It's a SCOTUS decision, and we cannot take community standards, which is also part of 847, into account without the community being involved in the decisions. Sexual content does not equal pornography. That is what the State Board of Education said in the clips that I sent to you. Please review them. Under the comment for the Handmaid's Tale, "I want everyone to remember what you knew and what you're doing when you were in high school." For someone to say that our students do not understand that content and cannot process it, they study the Holocaust, slavery, and this story is extremely relevant in today's climate and events. So, please, look at the list, see the books that have affected authors and books that address people of color, as well as LGBTQ subjects and authors. LGBTQ content is still being deleted, even though the Equality Florida decision said it does not apply to school libraries. I'm going to end with something for our school librarians in Manatee County. Dave Eggers, in his acceptance speech of the Newberry Medal this year, "For the Eyes of the Impossible," a children's book. When the small-minded ban books, they're banning souls. They are removing certain voices from the chorus of humanity and the chorus of history. And it is librarians who are tasked with making sure that these souls are not removed, and they always have a home and always have a voice. No pressure, but we count on you to save us all, to protect us all, and to preserve us all. And I urge you to protect every child in Manatee County by preserving their stories and their books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. So, we'll move to item number nine on the agenda, which is, whoops, excuse me, number 10, item number 10, which is our consent items. And Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting on July 23rd, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of our consent items. Do we see it on granicus?
Do we have discussion first?
On consent?
Yeah.
Typically, no?
Okay. I didn't have anything to say.
Okay. And consent items pass five to zero. Moving on to item number 11, which is public hearing. So, I'm going to close this public meeting, and at the gavel, I'll be opening up our board public hearing. And in this public hearing, anyone is welcome to come up and talk about the item in this public hearing, which is the proposed changes to the Code of Student Conduct for the 24-25 school year that had previously been workshopped. And so, anyone wanting to come up and comment on? Seeing none? I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting for this evening. And we're going to, item number two, under the public hearing, approval of the adopting amendments to the Code of Conduct for the 24-25 school year. Superintendent, is this a recommendation?
It will be, yes.
Okay. So, it's yours. Floor, yours.
Thank you. I recommend approval to adopt the Code of Student Conduct and the amendments included for the 2024-25 school year.
We have a motion on the floor for Ms. Spray.
Us.
Fight for second.
You've got it, Ms. Foreman.
Ms. Foreman with a second. Board members, any comments? I don't see anybody left to speak, but, yep.
Only to say that, you know, we've gone over this in a workshop and really went through every single change, and just to make sure that, you know, be clear, like, this was thoroughly reviewed, discussed. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you to the staff that is involved in this, and the volunteers who get together and do this, you know, putting together the Code of Conduct, making these tweaks, and then sending it to us, and we have tweaks, and then sending it back. It's not an easy process. So, thank you for all the staff who did that. Appreciate that.
And chairman, if we can also say thank you to the students who served on the Code of Conduct Committee this year. That was an addition that were made, and appreciate their feedback.
A bonus.
Great. Thank you. Although, we're still having school on Mondays, so. Never let that one die. All right. So, I see no other board members lit up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of adopting the amendments to the Code of Student Conduct for the 24-25 school year, and that passes five to zero. All right. I am closing this public meeting once again, and I am opening up a public hearing of the board once again, so that we may hear comments regarding the changes to the student progression plan for 24-25 school year. Again, you don't have to be signed up. If you'd like to come up and give a public comment, you're more than welcome. Seeing no one, we will go ahead and close this public hearing and reopen or reconvene the regular meeting for this evening. And move to item number four. Dr. Weisong.
Thank you, chairman. I recommend approval of the 2024-2025 Student Progression Plan for elementary school, middle school, high school, and K-12 virtual education.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I don't see any board members lit up to speak.
I just want to say, just like before, we had a workshop where we discussed this thoroughly. I just want to make sure that's stated.
Absolutely. And just like before, I'll thank all the staff for putting this together and working, and I appreciate that. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the 24-25 Student Progression Plan for elementary, middle, and high schools and K-12 virtual education. Passes five to zero. Moving on to item number 14, new business, non-consent items. Item number one is approval of the budget amendments for May 2024. Dr. Weisong.
Thank you, chairman. I recommend approval of the budget amendments for May 2024.
So moved.
A second.
We have motion and a second. Ms. Sellers, come on up.
Chair Choat and board members, good evening. So, for the month of May, the budget amendments saw 774 budget amendments, and eight of those chart strings affected over a million. So, they specifically affected three funds, the general fund, special revenue, and the capital fund. The general fund was two chart strings. These expenditures, one was for the transfer of the CAFE program budget from the reserve to the schools. That was 1.7 million. And the transportation salary reduction due to vacancies, that was 1.1 million. In the special revenue fund, we saw Title I, Part A, Amendment III. There was a roll-forward revenue upload of 1.4 million. And in the capital fund, there were five chart strings. In the other capital projects fund, there were two chart strings that moved the MTC expansion project budget to the 24-25 fiscal year. That was 7.1 million. And the local capital improvement moved, there was a move of the Palmetto High School renovation budget to the 24-25 school year. That was 5.1 million. There was the PICO construction for MTC, where we added the PICO revenue of 3 million to that project budget. And then, we had impact fees, where there was the site fees that was moved to 24-25, 1.3 million. And that is all.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? I don't see anyone lit up to speak. I know we got that in our briefing. Thank you very much, Ms. Sellers. And so, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the budget amendments for May 2024. So, let's go ahead and vote. That passes five to zero. Those budget amendments are approved. Item number two, Dr. Weisong.
Thank you, chairman. I recommend approval to advertise a notice of public hearing to adopt tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for fiscal year 2024-25.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and yeah, Ms. Sellers, go ahead.
Yes. So, this advertisement or authorization to advertise, this is governed by a section in the Florida statutes to adopt the millage rate. It's called Truth of Millage. It's referenced as TRIM. It has a very specific timeline. It started on July 1st, where the district received certified taxable value from the tax collector. And then, that particular amount is used, or DOE took that taxable value, and they recalculate the required local millage rate that the legislature had used, and they assumed taxable value, which is originally from the conference report. And then, on July 18, we received the final required local effort in the second calc. The RLE was 3.039. There was a prior period adjustment of .012. So, gave us an adjusted RLE of 3.051. This was in comparison to what we had initially first disclosed in the conference report. That was 3.139. So, the total millage, when you add also the 1.5 mil, the discretionary .748 mil, and the voted, the 1.0 mil, that total is 6.299. The advertisement, which the advertisements were attached there in the boardwork, that is actually going to run this Saturday on July 27. So, today, we asked the board for the authorization to run this advertisement, and then it notifies the taxpayers of the public hearing that we're going to have next week. And that's- And that's when we will be presenting the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget. And there'll be more discussion on that one next week.
And we do have a board member, Ms. Foreman.
Yeah. Are you saying then that the rate is less than what we were anticipating?
Yes. So the rate is less. So while the rate that we're assessing is less, the property values are still slightly adjusted more. So we're still seeing, the taxpayers are still going to be seeing an increase, but the initially projected millage rate that I was reporting to you back in July has changed and has decreased.
Okay. Just to make it clear for the public, we have no choice on this rate. The state requires us to adopt it, the rate that they set.
Correct.
So so if your property taxes go up, it's because the value of your property went up. So is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bray?
And to add to that, when you're saying our tax rate, what we're collecting is going to increase is only because of the property values have increased, but the rate that we're taxing at actually decreased.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to really drive home, because a lot of people say we're raising taxes, raising taxes. Look at how much, when they get their TRIM notices, and we all get them, and they see what the district gets, but we're basically hamstringing on what we can do in that area.
But the tax rate is set by the state, but the home value is set by the property value of your home,
and they have property appraisers. Okay, that's all.
Mr. Tatum was, I'm sorry, never mind. Ms. Foreman, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, when you do do the presentation on the budget, if we could, because what I'm seeing is that over the years, that the portion of the school budget is being increasing on the local side and decreasing on the state side. Is that correct?
Well, this year, we did see, from in comparison to last year, last year had a decrease in the state funding. There was an increase this year in the state funding, but the local funding outweighed the increase that the state was additionally providing.
Just when you do your presentation, I'd really like to see how much is the local absorbing compared to the state and the trend over the years.
We'll make sure we make that adjustment. I think we might have published it today for next week, but we'll make that adjustment and get that in there for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Seeing no other board members that up to speak, I think we are good to go. Thank you very much.
I'll actually make one more comment.
Yeah. Jump back in.
Piggyback on what Ms. Bray said, is that the tax, the total millage tax rate has actually gone down consecutively over, I believe it's the last six or seven years, so.
I believe like the last eight years, I believe it had been decreasing.
So the tax rates are going down. Like Ms. Bray said, we don't have any control over property values, but tax rates are actually going down almost a mil over the last, I believe, seven years or so. And maybe if you could show that chart again next week, too, that would be helpful. You know, the chart that shows the little.
Shows the diagram, absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. That was the only comment I had to make. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval to advertise a public notice of a public hearing to adopt the tentative millages and tentative budget for fiscal year 24-25. Tentative, the key word. And that is passed five to zero. Item number three, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the shared space and service agreement with the Manatee Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $73,444 plus network infrastructure costs not to exceed $25,000.
So moved.
We have a motion and we have a second from Ms. Messenger. And board members, any comments on this particular item?
Maybe I request.
Actually, Dr. Weisong, if you want to go ahead and elaborate what it is, and then we'll go to board members.
Sure. Chairman and board members, as you're aware, the geographic density in Manatee County continues to change. We have lots of new families coming here. And in particular, in the east part of the county and north of the river. And we need to adapt our service model to that trend. And so although we have schools in the Lakewood Ranch area, we don't really have an administrative office presence. And so in looking around and in conversations with others, there is some vacant space available in the building on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard that the Manatee Chamber occupies. And our goal, if the board approves the lease, is to open a family welcome and support center staffed by members of our Office of Student Assignment. There'll also be a presence there from Transportation and Student Services, so that when we do have new families moving into that part of the county, we're there, ready to welcome them, say hello, assist with school enrollment, and other services. This also provides an opportunity for district staff who are itinerant, meaning they're, they may be starting their day here, but then heading out to schools and working in that part of the area to reduce the amount of time they're in the car moving around, because we'll have some shared space there where people can plug in a laptop and make phone calls or answer emails between school visits and meetings. So we just see this as a tactical opportunity to improve service in our growing east county area.
Thank you. I'll just say real quick, kudos to you, your staff, to doing this, and Mr. Chapman was involved, and good job for seeing this. We have tons of students out there, and this is needed, so the folks don't have to come so far into town for any kind of services. Ms. Foreman?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. If, on this side of town, or the west side of town, where do they go and will that continue?
So our Office of Student Assignment is located behind Lincoln Middle. And of course, Mr. Clark took over responsibility for that area when he joined us on July 8th. We're currently looking at the potential of opening other family support offices and centers and some of the other district facilities that we have where employees are working. I expect to finalize that in the next three weeks or so, and then move quickly from there. We certainly want to make it as easy as we can using our existing staff.
So our new families coming in in the month of July and August are still going to go to Lincoln Middle?
If they need in-person support, yes. Again, a new family coming in can register completely online, but there are families that like that in-person assistance. And so for now, that's available at the facility near Lincoln. But the lease agreement, if the board approves, takes effect pretty quickly, and so we just have to get our network infrastructure in place so that we're, you know, working on a secure network. And then we'll be able to add that pretty quickly, and then we'll just go from there, Ms. Foreman. So it won't be months, it'll be a matter of weeks as we reposition folks.
I just think it's a great move. I, I, kudos.
Ms. Bray?
My question is, the 73,444 says first year. We expect that to go down, I'm asking? After our first year initial?
The monthly lease with the Chamber for the physical space, that cost remains roughly fixed. There, I believe, and Mr. Chapman can come down if I'm mistaken, but I believe there's like a 3% increase. It is very nominal for the duration of the three years. The technology cost is largely fixed first year, and then we anticipate that cost falling dramatically in year two, partially through the UCEV rate.
Okay, so the shared space basically is going to be the 73,444, and, but we're going to do a $25,000 initial for infrastructure, networking with our, connecting to our basically services that we do here all the time. So that is, and basically lease, the 73 is the lease amount for this shared space? How big is that shared space?
Yeah, it's, and many of you might have been there. There's a very large meeting space as well that can hold several hundred people that we'll have access to, to have community meetings and forums there as well. Can even have a remote board meeting, maybe perhaps, but there's probably, we'll be taking over half of the offices. It's something like eight offices. There's a combination of offices and cubicles. And then the, that network infrastructure, right, is to, there is, we have our fiber, you know, our secure fiber network is out on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. So we got to go get it and bring it into the building, and so that way we can have a very secure system there. And then like Dr. Weisong said, it then drops dramatically the next year, that network infrastructure to just, you know, a few thousand. And again, this is, again, a wonderful opportunity. It's somewhat temporary, because as we, as Mr. Rinaldi and his team look for, you know, land and buildings, as we look for the next couple of years, that maybe perhaps we can find a more permanent place out there eventually, so.
Is this something that could be integrated into one of our new builds?
I think that's what we're potentially exploring.
Right, this is contemplating, I mean, and, you know, again, we'll give this a shot, and we'll track usage and family satisfaction, but certainly in a future facility build, we could consider a small satellite or regional office. We just don't have that space available now. There are obviously additional security considerations for, you know, a public-facing facility versus a secure school. So there's a lot to work through there, but that's one of the concepts we're talking about, Vice Chair.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other board members that up to speak. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the shared space and service agreement with Manatee Chamber of Commerce. And that is approved five to zero. And another aspect, I think, of that that I'm excited about is the partnering with the Chamber and potentially businesses getting involved with potential students, and so I'm excited about that. Item number four, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the proposed dock design agreement to benefit the Anna Maria Elementary Guy Harvey Academy of Arts and Sciences.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Weisong, you want to explain a little bit about what this project entails and the Guy Harvey program?
Yes. So, board members, this project connects to the work that was led by Superintendent Saunders to bring the Guy Harvey Academy concept to the school district of Manatee County. And as you're aware, the board advocated for a state appropriation, received $2 million from the legislature. Last year, half of that funding was used to expand programming, not only at Anna Maria Elementary, but also at King Middle and Manatee High. Our next step is, proposed step, is the creation of a dock on the property at Anna Maria. And so this would get that process rolling. This is a time-sensitive project, because there is an expiration date on that, on the state funding. And so that's why we're bringing this now, so that we can get moving on this part of the project. Mr. Rinaldi, of course, is available if you have specific questions on the design or the timeline.
Thank you. Ms. Bray, you were lit up to comment?
Yeah, a couple of questions on some of the, I mean, we are going through our own contractors and architects. Am I guessing that to be right? Is, my guess is, is Guy Harvey doing any of this, or is it all appropriated? I mean, the stamp, Guy Harvey's everywhere on this project. What buy-in do they have?
Good evening. At this point right now, we are working on the design. What's before you is the selection of the architect. We used our standard continuing service architects. The board has approved a group of about a dozen-plus architects that we use on what is classified as small projects, which according to Florida statute is under $4 million, and this project falls within that. So we select an architect. Typically, we take a look at the workload that we've been giving those architects and what their expertise are, and we felt that this group was a good selection for this project. We will be working with the Guy Harvey when we get into the design, once the architect is under contract, and we'll be working with the school and the specific program as well.
So appears that you have proposed teams and fees on this proposal. BWAS Design Architect, GOS and Associates, LLC Landscape Architect, and Park Coastal Surveying. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, so those, BWAS Design is what you would call the prime architect, and the other groups are all subcontractors to the prime architect.
So the primary architect is BWAS Design?
Yes.
And then they contract everybody underneath them?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Okay. I just think it's an awful lot to go through when we, it's just a little baby dock, but, okay. That was basically my question, is how that really works, and did Guy Harvey have any buy-in on this? I mean, we are.
They'll be involved in the design and the principal, and all of the program staff from curriculum will be involved in the design.
I just don't want a dock built for a t-shirt shop.
Okay.
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 I just had to say that, I'm sorry.
Well, as long as we can maybe get free t-shirts.
Yeah, there you go.
And I will say, this, I don't think this is going to be a little document, where eventually, from the beginning, when Guy Harvey was brought on to us several years ago, three years ago, the idea was always to have a dock, potential boat, et cetera, all from appropriations. Like, it's not coming from, we're not saying no to something else here as a board to do this dock. This is all money that we went out and sought for and got, thanks to our delegates, et cetera, that came back saying, this is what you're going to use it for. And so, but I don't, if you read it, I mean, that 30-foot boat, that's not just a little small boat. I mean, and, you know, when we get, that time comes, maybe it's not 30, maybe it's 27. I mean, but regardless, is that the idea of the dock and have a boat to be able to take our kids out was always in the very beginnings of this, and that's why we went to appropriations. Because as Dr. Weisong always says, if you want to do something, you got to take it from somewhere else. And that's why we went to appropriations to get this. So just a reminder, Ms. Foreman was lit up to speak. I'm sorry, Ms. Bray, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done. I just want to comment, too, about the little dock idea. I think the bigger the better, and the reason for that is you've got young children, small children going out on a dock, you know, and so you want for safety, you want a larger dock to accommodate them. But you may also want space, and it'd be interesting to see what they come back with on the design, but you may want space for them to sit and wait for the next round on the boat. There may be, if it goes far enough out into the water, you know, they can take nets and pull up sea life and talk about it, and not even have to go out on the boat, you know, because boats are expensive to operate. So I think it's, you know, it's an exciting opportunity for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Nobody else lit up to speak, so I will go ahead and move to voting on the approval of the Anna Maria Elementary Guy Harvey Academy of Arts and Science dock design, the agreement between owner, us, and BWAS Design. And that passes. And that passes five to zero. Uh, thank you Superintendent for your recommendations. We now move to the new business with no superintendent recommendation. Uh, first item of business is the acceptance of the resignation of Citizens Financial Oversight Committee member. Uh, I'm going to shoot this over to you, Ms. Bray.
Yes, Mr. Hartman has decided to resign from the committee. Uh, I don't know if you wanted me to read his resignation letter or just say that he's found that there are other things that he's being led to do, and time permitting, he decided to step down from the CFO.
Thanks, we, I know we all up here appreciate his service. And, uh, he's been a great, always coming to the meetings and, and giving a lot of inspiration to the meetings here. So, um, we thank him for his service and wish him, wish him the best and whatever else he's finding to fill his time.
I'm sure he'll be back to offer the invocation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Um, I don't see any other board members, uh, lit up to speak? So let's go ahead and vote on the acceptance of the resi- oh.
I was just going to say, I, I move that we accept the resignation letter, uh, from Mr. Hartman.
My bad.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second now. Any board members want to speak on the resignation? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the acceptance of the resignation of Citizens Financial Oversight Committee member. And that passes five to zero. Alright, moving on to item number, uh, two under new business with no superintendent recommendation, is the appointment, uh, of the advocacy committee member and alternate for the Florida School Board Association. Um, I put this on here because, uh, they, um, it's needed before we actually do our reorg in November. Um, and so currently, um, I am the, the seat, and I believe that alternate was Ms. Foreman.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so obviously with Ms. Foreman not here, I'm willing to continue to be the seat. So Ms. Bray, you gotta be the alternate?
I guess I'll be the alternate.
Um, so, um, I just need a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to remove Ms. Foreman from the alternate on the Florida School Board Association's Advocacy Committee and put Ms. Bray in her place. And in place of Ms. Foreman, not in her place. Let's go ahead and vote. Or any board members have any comments on that? Alright, um, let's go ahead and vote on that change to the advocacy committee members. You're good. And that passes five to zero. Thank you all. Um, and we will pass that on to the FSBA. Uh, item number three is the approval of the master service agreement and engagement letter with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, um, through the private internal audit services for period July one, twenty twenty-four, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, for the school district estimated three hundred ninety-seven thousand. Um, oh, sorry, I am frozen on Granicus.
Yeah, same here.
Um, there we go. So I know we, um, have, have discussed this before in the past, um, at a, at a workshop. Ms., uh, Foreman, do you have any, being delays on, do you have any comments on it before we ask for a motion or?
Um, well, yeah, this is...
Just about the item in general?
Um, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, um, they took the format that they've used in the past and broke it down into, uh, into two. There was a master service agreement, which will stay the same year to year. And then, um, the letter of engagement is that for, specifically for the year twenty-four, twenty-five. And attached to that letter of engagement is a list of, uh, recommended areas to be audited and the number of hours. Now, their rates are not going up a bit, okay, and I thi- I think we do need to hear from, uh, from Mr. Smith.
I was going to bring him up.
And, um, and the hours are equal, if not less than, than the prior year. So, um, anyway, um, so I look forward to Mr. Smith explaining what areas the audit committee is recommending that the board approve. And also I want to keep it, want you all to keep in mind that it can be changed at any time with board approval.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Mr. Smith, will you please come on down and reiterate or add anything that Ms. Foreman discussed about the, um, engagement letter? Thank you for being here.
Alright, good evening, Mark Smith with CRI. Um, as was discussed, our format change where the master service agreement, uh, that was provided to Purchasing and Mr. Dai, he reviewed it, uh, we went back and forth a little bit on some changes. We both agreed and those, uh, were reflected in the, uh, master services agreement. The engagement letter, and, uh, it's very similar to what we've had in the past, uh, from our audit approach. And as Mrs. Foreman mentioned on page, last page, exhibit eight, the number of hours has stayed the same. Just because we have these hours doesn't mean we use them all. Um, this year I think we'll be about two hundred hours short from using them and also not even, uh, close to approaching our maximum amount, um, as far as the dollar amount. So again, unless we have audits, unless we are given approval to do them, um, you know, we don't use up all the hours or all the audits in there. Um, in there, we have, uh, sales surtax, which we complete and perform every year. Uh, the maintenance and facilities audit and human resources were discussed with the audit committee and identified. And then we have a couple audit areas available to anything that comes out through the school year, which again, the audit committee would discuss and then bring to you for the board, like they've done this last year, to have approved, um, to add to the, to the audit program. Or if some, one of the existing audits change, that can be discussed as well and adjusted. So, um, again, the, the rates have stayed the same, uh, therefore the fees have stayed the same. And, you know, we're, we do not have to use all the hours. We use what we need to in the budget. And, uh, we provide that, um, updates at the audit committee, uh, on the progress of our audits and where we're at, at each audit committee.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Um, any board members lit up to speak? Anyone want to?
Whoever had a motion.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry. So, uh, we do need, now we've, we've got some, some background on the item. Uh, anyone willing to make a motion to?
I will move that we accept, um, the, uh, engagement letter and the master service agreement with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Bray?
I'm glad this is on the agenda because this will start the process, not to discredit anything that CRI sent for the district. But I've always been on the side of going out for bid, um, for this particular item. Um, I think it's a, a good practice in business to do that. I don't think we've ever put this item out for bid, to my knowledge, it's just been kinda...
Five years ago.
Five years, right, okay, so, so it's probably time to look at other options that may be out there that's doing the same quality of work and see what comparisons and what other businesses are out there that are willing to, uh, do these kind of functions for the district. So, I don't know if this was a five-year term and we just renewed it, or if it was a one-year or two-year. I don't know the history of that part. But I do think that this is a, a good thing to adopt this now. And then also for the, uh, purchasing department and of course with the input of Dr. Weisong and his, uh, cabinet members to look at, uh, other companies that could do the same quality work that you have done in the past. So I'm gonna vote for this, so.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. Foreman?
Okay, first, uh, I do want to point out that Dr. Weisong and his cabinet do not have any input on this. The, um, engagement of CRI is strictly ours. This is our hire and they report to us. They do, you know, because we keep them separate.
That's true, I'm sorry, I did it.
Yeah, okay. And as far as the history goes, um, yes, initially, uh, CRI was, had a five-year engagement. And then we did take it out to bid, and there were two firms, that's all, that applied for it. And, um, CRI was, you know, there, there was, there, it, there wasn't a lot of competition, let me put it that way. So we had another five-year agreement and this last, this is the last year on that. We're done with the five. So, so yes, I mean, all along it's been anticipated to go out and...
Right, who did the bidding though for us? Who?
Our own procurement.
Our own procurement, right, so our, our pure, yeah, department did that for us and brought the information to the board to review and to make a choice on what auditing firm that they selected five years ago.
Okay, yeah, I just want to explain the process. The process is that, uh, purchasing puts it out
Right.
to the whole area, you know, and, and people are free to, uh, to bid on it. And then, um, those bids go before the audit committee and they review them, you know, for qualifications and, and so on. And then, um, they, if there's a lot, which there wasn't, but if there's a lot, we'll, the audit committee will narrow it down to, uh, a select number of candidates. And they have not determined yet how many that's going to be. Those people come in and do a presentation that the board is absolutely invited. Uh, I can just, I can tell you five years ago, they weren't, they weren't interested, they didn't come. But, um, and then based on that, um, the audit committee makes their recommendation to the board. And then the board will, uh, will ultimately vote. Um, it is, it is the selection and the hire of the board.
Right, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process, that the district purchasing department actually does their procurement for a bidding of whomever, right? It's not us as a board that are out there looking for an auditor, right, right? When you, yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on the process, I'm understanding purchasing to, to do all of that. And then they present that to the audit committee is what you're saying? And the audit committee brings a recommendation before the board?
After a much?
Right, there's a lot of steps. I, yeah, I, trust me, I know the steps. There's a lot. So, okay, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm gonna support this, but I'm also in the mindset of, okay, let's see what's out there now. It's been five years, you never know. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Ms. Messenger, you were lit up to speak?
Yeah, I, I just took, like, one thing that you said, that the board didn't take notice five years ago. And I just want to say, I very much took notice five years ago. I listened to the entire meeting. Your discussion during that meeting, I can, is what swayed my vote. And so I just want to be clear, I couldn't attend it.
Oh, okay.
Because of the timing of it. It doesn't mean I didn't take note or didn't listen to everything that was said in that meeting.
Okay.
That is all.
Everyone except Ms. Messenger. No, that's true, and Ms. Messenger's always been very involved or interested.
I do have a question on, I mean, and I think you said it, but the areas, audit area four, audit area five. You mi- uh, you, you mentioned it. I want to make sure I caught it. What are those for?
Those are placeholders now so that if the audit committee determines or something comes up from management or the board a concern, that there's time allotted in the audit plan, uh, for that and it's not already spoken for or allocated for something that right now is not at the level that needs the audit, but it's, it's there for, for that.
Gotcha. Is it almost like a, like a contingency fund?
Yeah, it's like a placeholder, because a lot of times in your audit plan, you don't want to have every, every hour accounted for. You want to do, allow some time, maybe you have, you get into one of the areas and you need more time for a scope, um, or that something comes up that wasn't on your radar that allows you to adjust and add.
And is this for you all as a staff to know, hey, there's gonna, could be, potentially?
Yeah.
These amount of hours for this particular client for you all?
Yeah.
And, and if it helps you all that way, is that something that, when you guys create that, is that something that helps you all say, hey, that we could have another two hundred fifty, could have another hundred seventy-five in this, for this particular?
Yeah, that, that we could allocate if we need it, um, that is there. Um, and then, like I said, if we don't need it, then we don't use the hours, so.
Alright, thank you. I, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of, of putting necess- so I do believe the contingency, one hundred percent. I, I mean, I'm going to prove this, this is going to get approved. Um, but I'm not a huge fan of seeing four hundred some hours of just in case because potentially, um, and I'm not saying our audit committee does this, but potentially you could have other things pop up just because we know we have X amount of hours to spare, right? Um, and so I'm okay with audit committee coming to us if it wasn't even there and then saying, hey, we do believe we should look at X, Y, Z that wasn't on the original plan.
Yep.
And then we say, yeah, absolutely, let's do it. You know, CRI, how many hours do you think you need for that? Oh, we need a hundred fifty, boom. I would rather see it done in that process than just having it built in. But, um, I mean, I'm, I'm the, I'm not going to dime a sword and say no to this. I mean, it's still, I mean, you guys do a great job, so. Um, I don't see any other board members. Oh, Ms., uh, Ms. Trainum?
Just so I understand how...
Did you click again or you just not?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
Probably for Ms. Foreman, since you're kind of the expert here, this is something we are legally required to have, right? Per statute, these auditors, it's either that or we have an internal auditor and we've chosen to perform this function with CRI, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Just wanted to clarify that from my understanding. Thank you.
Ms. Bray?
And to add on to that, I would like that to be one of the options, that whether external, uh, firm or we have our own individual team.
Okay. I would just, I would just advise you that when we start talking about that, when we do that RP, RQ, et cetera?
Right, right, right.
Remember that for when we start doing the workshops and scheduling that.
Exactly.
We have that built in and we've had that before on page ten because the district has hired an, uh, in-house internal auditor. So we have that in there that if the board appoints a board staff internal auditor, we'll, we'll perform these functions and before it was kind of set up supporting, we had it where some audits were taken over and then that, that person didn't work out. But we have that in our engagement letter, be, in the event that the district does decide to do that during the year, that we could support them and it's, it's already in the engagement letter.
Perfect.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, thank you very much. I don't see anybody else lit up to speak. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. And, uh, so we had our motion and a second. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the master service agreement and engagement letter with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to provide our internal audits for this next school year. And that passes five to zero. Alright, moving on to, um, item number sixteen is, is just informational only, for those who wanted to see that. Um, number seventeen, item number seventeen are updates. Let's start with instructional update. Mr. Jensen?
Good evening, Chair Show, board members, Superintendent Weisong. Um, I had the privilege this morning of participating in, um, one of my favorite events to kind of kick off a school year, which is our new teacher orientation, um, which we're holding this week, um, today through Thursday at Manatee High School. Um, today we had one hundred and sixty-three new, um, school district of Manatee County teachers in attendance, um, registered for sessions, um, receiving keynotes, breaking out to sessions aligned to different areas of, um, pedagogy, responsibility, everything from how to use our systems to, to how to manage your classroom. And, um, the, you know, there's always a lot of energy and excitement with our new teachers because some of our new teachers are, are brand new to the classroom and some of them have had, um, you know, successful careers in other districts and have now relocated to, to Manatee and are going to be, um, bringing their skills to our schools. So, um, special thanks to Ms. Tara Brown, Allison Nichols, and the curriculum team, as well as, uh, human resources, operations, and all the other, um, teams that kind of come together to, to support our new educators. But it's a, it's a great way to start, um, moving towards the beginning of the school year. Similarly, um, next week we'll be having a summer professional learning conference, um, for our teachers, which will be at Lakewood Ranch High School. Um, teachers throughout the district can attend sessions on Monday and Tuesday on a range of, of topics related to supporting ESE and ESOL learners, um, curriculum teaching strategies, using our new instructional materials and many more. And then on Wednesday, those teachers will be engaged in collaborative planning with each other to implement the, the things that they've learned on Monday and Tuesday and, and plan for the upcoming year using the... and, and plan for the upcoming year, using those, um, new strategies and that new knowledge, which I'm really excited about. Um, a quick science materials update. Um, all of our first-ranked choices, are the, the adoption committees', recommendations for first-ranked choices that the board approved for our K-12 science materials, have been approved by DOE, except for marine science. We're continuing to work with the publisher of that material and the Florida Schoolbook Depository to make sure our teachers and students have, um, our digital and print materials in time for the first day of school. As a matter of fact, thanks to the leadership on the curriculum team, we've already started receiving the initial shipments of materials. So, we're looking forward to, uh, rolling those out, um, to schools as they continue to come in. And then finally, um, at Manatee Technical College, um, program classes begin on August 6th, with teachers returning on July 30th. Um, the adult school programs already have 1,000 students enrolled in their classes, which start on, um, September 3rd. Um, between the technical and adult programs, MTC will be at its highest enrollment since before 2020. Have a lovely night.
I have a question.
You have a, yeah, board members?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Tatum?
Who's first? Me?
Yep.
Okay. See, what was my question? Um, you said that one of the curriculums was not yet approved by DOE. Did I hear you say that?
One of the textbooks, um, and that's the marine science textbook. So, it's not on the, they kind of have a, what they call the, the approved list, and that's kind of where the, the final, you know, DOE-approved materials end up, and that makes them, kind of gives them the final green light for districts to purchase. And so, sometimes, if there's been feedback that they've given publishers, they kind of work with those publishers on the requested revisions until the book ends up on that, on that list. So, we, you know, we speak to our, our publisher representatives, as well as people who work at the Department of Education, to try to understand the timeline on those revisions and make strategic decisions on whether to, to, you know, um, wait to order that first-choice book or to, to defer to the second committee recommendation.
Okay. So, I, so I'm curious what happens if it doesn't get, like, there's probably a drop dead date, like, one August or something, where, like, look, we got to have a book. So, then you, you move to the second choice, then? Is that what you do at that point, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. I was just curious what the process is. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, we're good?
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Rinaldi, operations?
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Weisong. Give you a quick update. First, human resources. There was a virtual brazen, uh, teacher and para-job fair that was held, uh, this morning. We had 274 registrants, 161 attendees, uh, 276 contacts, and, uh, at this point, reporting multiple interviews. But, uh, we don't have the job offer count at this time, but, uh, I'll keep you up to date on that. Um, the last operational job fair was held July 16th. Uh, there were 116 attendees, uh, 10 job offers were made, uh, six custodians, uh, were given a job offer, and four food service, uh, uh, workers were given a job offer as well. Um, of that group, we had seven bus drivers, uh, that are candidates, and we're working with them to, uh, get their CDL permit, so we can get them in training and move them through the hiring process. Our next operational job fair is scheduled for August 29th, and that'll be at the Wakeland Center as well. Uh, one of the, one of the departments within Human Resources is Benefits, and they are organizing Employee Health Fair. Uh, it's scheduled for, uh, October 14th at Braden River High School, 11:30 to 4:30. At this time, they have 27 vendors that are signed up and committed to that fair. So, I'll keep you up to date and keep that on everyone's radar as we get to that time. Uh, August edition of the Thrive Newsletter, which comes from the Benefits Department, will feature employee incentive programs and eight dimensionals, Eight Dimensions of Wellness. Uh, the Department of Health Family Health Event, which is scheduled for Saturday, August 3rd, and a reminder for regular skin checks in support of UV Safety Awareness Month, which is this month. So, that's coming up. Transportation Services, their call center is up and running. Uh, training is in place at this time right now with them. Uh, they're going to be, uh, starting on the, the 29th of this month. Uh, so, uh, call-ins, uh, they'll be answering. Um, because Focus just rolled over yesterday, uh, parent callers are being advised to watch their student's parent focus portal uh, for student bus assignment information, since we're in development with that right now, basically tying the route, routes to individual students. Uh, the, uh, Transportation Leadership Seminar is scheduled for August 5th. Uh, so that's a full week-long seminar, where they're doing lectures, they're doing training, and then for the final two days, they're doing dry runs of their bus route. So, uh, that's in planning right now. Um, in addition, uh, we had today, interviews for van drivers. Uh, we had six candidates submit for the four positions, and it's nice to say, they were all internal candidates, they were all bus aides. So, they're looking to progress up to becoming drivers. So, uh, we're working through, uh, that, uh, right now. Uh, the current route count, uh, as of today, is 93 bus routes. We do have 94 rostered, uh, drivers. We have two additional drivers in training, and we're working with the other seven drivers to get them into the process as well. Uh, Communications, uh, sent out an email blast to all of the parents, uh, yesterday, just reminding them, uh, to go onto our website and to access the register to ride, so that we can make sure that we're capturing every student that desires to have transportation. Um, from a, from a, uh, maintenance standpoint, a lot of times, they feel slighted a little bit, because we talk a lot about the big projects that we're doing and all that, so that they wanted to identify some of their summer projects for you all. Uh, we've got painting at Mills Elementary. Palmetto High School, uh, has painting going on as well, and Seabreeze Elementary. We've got roofing projects at Braden River High, Freedom, and Johnson K-8, uh, over the summer. Uh, and they're replacing fire alarms, uh, at King Middle School, uh, Mills, Moody Elementary School, and Palmetto Elementary School. So, we've got four campuses, elementary campuses, and a middle school campus that will be getting new fire alarm systems. Uh, they also have flooring going on at about seven campuses. Uh, they're also replacing boilers, they've got generators, and HVAC controls. So, they've got a fairly busy summer so far, and they're, uh, looking to have the majority of that work done prior to school opening. Some may, uh, extend into September, but, uh, the majority of that work, uh, is scheduled. Um, Food Service, um, Food Service celebrated their three-millionth, uh, free summer meal at Sammaset earlier this week on Monday. I know the some attended. Thanks for coming out. Uh, and finally, I'd like to recognize Regina Toma, our Director of Food and Nutrition Service. She was accepted to the 2024-25, uh, Leadership Manatee Program. Is going, is going to be the district representative there, so.
Right.
That's all I've got. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Rinaldi, that's a lot of good news there. Uh, do we have any good news on the number of bus mechanics we have? I'm just curious.
Oh, I missed that. We hired two new bus mechanics as well. That was on my notes there. So, yeah, we've got two new bus mechanics.
Which puts us at six, or?
That puts us at, uh, six, plus we're, we were outsourcing some, uh, having some contractors come in as well.
Yeah, good. Well, that's moving in the right direction, so that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, legal update?
Uh, well, your law firm's fully staffed again. I'm really looking forward to working with Kevin. He's, uh, really got great qualifications, uh, board-certified in educational law. That's going to be very beneficial to the district. Um, everything stayed busy over the summer, even though the teachers take time off. Lots of contracts come through. I'll be happy to have Mr. Penley reviewing contracts soon.
They've already sent them.
Are they starting to do that? And, uh, nope, everything, everything is good, as far as I know it.
Good news.
Yep.
When there's nothing going on in law, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh, Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, also want to extend a welcome to Mr. Penley. Uh, I think he's been, uh, I think this is day six on the job, and a couple of those days were all-day leadership meetings. So, uh, we're glad, uh, he's here, and, and I know my, uh, team is excited to have his expertise, so. Um, and, uh, with Mr. Penley's arrival, our, our district leadership team is fully staffed, and we are, uh, pretty much in, uh, go mode for the 24-25 school year. So, uh, before I chat about some of those preparations, board members, thank you for your support of tonight's consent agenda. There were 36 items. I think we gave you well over 1,000 pages of prep material for this meeting. So, we, uh, we appreciate all of you and the work that you do. Um, just some highlights, uh, from the consent agenda. We submitted a total of $39.3 million in federal and state grants. Um, a lot of these grants, uh, come out, uh, late in the fiscal year with July 1 deadlines. Um, I know that, uh, I was, uh, reading, uh, uh, final drafts of grants, um, I think as late as, uh, June 27th, June 28th, to try to get all of these things in, and appreciation to, uh, all the grant managers and the grant teams. It's a great reminder, board members, that financially, we, we can't run this district without support from multiple levels of government, uh, and, uh, the, the grants are very important. Uh, also, uh, a thank you to United Way Sun Coast, which continues to be, uh, a major, uh, philanthropic partner of the district. Um, with, uh, their support and the support of, of their donors, um, uh, they are funding eight paraprofessionals, uh, at our Title I elementary schools for the upcoming school year, uh, to, uh, advance the cause of, um, early literacy. So, we appreciate United Way Sun Coast for that. Uh, and finally, uh, board members, your approval tonight, um, uh, allows us to take the first step on the, uh, design, uh, procurement process for our next two schools, uh, in the Rye Ranch area and the Artisan Lakes area, those, uh, open in, uh, 2026. And so, uh, we get started, uh, on that work, um, as a result of your authorization tonight. And, and to clarify, that's, that's to get our architect, construction management firms, get all the professionals, uh, in place. Um, I know that, uh, we are, um, while that's going on, of course, we're continuing, um, on the North Middle School and the East K-8. Uh, lots of walls going up on those two sites to open in '25. So, thank you again for your support of the consent agenda. Um, as Mr. Jensen and Mr. Rinaldi both noted, we are, um, um, we, we are fully focused on the start of school, uh, for 24-25. We're less than three weeks out. Uh, lots of events going on, um, for teachers, very busy in HR. We, uh, at this point, we are 97% staffed on the instructional side. Uh, so we still do have some positions open, uh, and, uh, our principals are, are hiring away as candidates, um, uh, identify themselves. We know there'll be lots of great events over the next three weeks. Uh, the, uh, Bradenton Marauders have their annual back-to-school night, uh, coming up Saturday night at 6:30 at LeCom, and, uh, I'll be there handing out backpacks to the first 500, uh, children, 12 and under, so they are ready, uh, with, uh, their backpacks from the marauders for the start of the school year. That, that'll be a, a great time. Uh, we are also working, um, to get ready for the official return of a lot of our personnel on Monday, August 5th. But of course, hundreds of our teachers, um, are already back working, getting training, looking at new textbooks, and so thank you to all of our employees who, um, uh, are not enjoying the rest of the summer. They're already, uh, uh, hard at work. Um, and just a reminder, um, uh, to anybody who's watching, you know, this meeting, that most important thing we need right now is for people in the community to remind families that if they are not yet registered for school, we need to get that taken care of. Uh, our principals are, are working very, very hard to get every student scheduled, and, um, when, when people wait until the first day of school or the day before school starts to get registered, it, um, it complicates, um, scheduling. It complicates, um, of classes, uh, uh, scheduling of buses. And so, earlier registration is better. We're seeing, um, very high enrollment, uh, at some of our schools. Uh, and, um, the, the sooner we know, um, who is coming and who isn't, uh, the, the better we can provide services to students and families on the first day. Um, so, um, uh, finally, uh, just a preview of upcoming events. We do have a workshop, uh, on, uh, Thursday, uh, the 23rd. And then, uh, just a reminder that next week, we do have a special meeting at 5:05 PM, and that is to, uh, do the public hearing on the tentative budget that Ms. Sellers spoke about earlier. Also, that, uh, night, the other item on the agenda is, uh, final approval of a set of policies, uh, board that you've already given preliminary approval to and workshopped. Uh, I do, uh, want to note, um, uh, just, uh, for transparency, uh, with the public, uh, there were several policies that were brought for repeal, revision, um, or adoption, um, to update, uh, related to weapons on campus. Uh, uh, board members, uh, you asked some questions, and we did receive some public comment. Uh, we're, uh, we're going to withdraw those policies, uh, and continue to fine-tune the language so that we're very clear, uh, about our intentions. And of course, uh, that involves a, a small group of lawyers working on that as well. So, uh, we'll bring those back at a future date. But again, uh, all of those policies will be withdrawn prior to the final approval of the rest of the package. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were you led up to speak, or is that just from last time?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry.
No worries. Um, thank you very much, Superintendent. Appreciate it. And, uh, board comments this evening, Foreman, Messenger, Tatum, Spry, myself. So, Ms. Foreman?
Okay.
Lead off.
All right. Um, the last, uh, couple of weeks, even though it's summer, I've been, uh, been occupied. Um, on July 10th, the audit committee met, and at that meeting, um, um, what you saw this evening with, um, the CRI, um, uh, engagement letter, and then, uh, was, was discussed. And, uh, Mr. Daniel will be coming to you on Thursday with a report of the meeting, so I won't steal his thunder. But, um, it was, uh, it was a good meeting. Um, one thing I want to ask, because one of the items that we talked about was, uh, uh, it's time to go out for bid. And we're gonna, it's time to get it underway for, not only for the internal audit, but also for the external auditor. And does this need to be on the agenda? Do we need to get board approval to get, get the ball rolling? Do you think?
Are you saying to get it on agenda to then?
To, to start, to have, to have purchasing go, you know, go out and?
Get the purchasing department?
I think we already did that a year ago.
Yeah.
And then postponed it.
That was for the external.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um...
Well...
Legal?
I think you should.
Yeah, okay.
You think a workshop first, and, and, or just put it on the agenda, I didn't say this, we want them to go do it, because we're...
I'm not sure you need to workshop it again.
Okay.
Um, I mean, if you are gonna, I think, you know, this board knows what happened with deciding not to, uh, pursue the, the last, uh...
Right.
RFQ or whatever it was.
Correct, correct.
So, I mean, if, I think you could have it right on a regular agenda, if you wanted to, to restart that process.
We do need to get it going, so, uh, so, okay, I'll take, I'll make sure that that gets on. Um, and then today, I'm, uh, uh, Ms. Ginger Minster and I met with a tentative, uh, someone who was interested in becoming an audit committee member, and his qualifications are fabulous. Um, and so, I'll be bringing that to the board on the next agenda. Uh, spent a lot of time, um, in the past couple of weeks, trying to get the contract ready on the, uh, Greater Florida Consortium's event. Um, we, we are, we have a contract now, and it's going to be, uh, and please put it on your calendar, September 25th. Um, there'll be a dinner, um, to be determined where. And then, September 26th and 27th will be the meeting, uh, at Zoda on Longboat Key. And, um, um, I guess, Mr. Chapman and I will be putting our heads together on, on meals and activities, and, you know, so any ideas that you all have, um, please, please, uh, bring them to me or to Mr. Chapman. And, um, Mr. Penley, I'm so happy you're here. Um, you have no idea. Uh, so, a couple, a couple of things I'm looking forward to discussing with you, um, are the, um, our book policy. You know, I, I had all but given up on it, so, um, you know, uh, you, you resurrected it for me, so. Um, and then, um, the ADA compliance, um, we've got some questions about, and, and I figure you might have some insight from your previous, uh, employment. So, uh, good, good. So, um, especially rela, and talking related to the audit committee, um, the reports for being ADA compliant, so.
Yes.
Okay. So, I look forward to that, anxious to get on your calendar, but I know you are, you're inundated right now, so. Thank you. So, that's all I have. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Messenger?
I too just want to welcome you, Mr. Penley. Thank you for coming aboard with us. And I just want to give a call out to parents, they're probably counting down, but if you're not, 20 days, friends, and teachers, 20 days, guys, I'm sorry. So, you know, 20 days, but it's pretty exciting, so I'm excited. We have one more meeting before the beginning of the school year, but by then, teachers will all be back, so. Other than that, I just want to thank everybody. Thank everybody for putting together this meeting. I can only imagine how difficult it was, and so, I really appreciate everyone putting it together and being here, and so, I just want to say thank you to everybody for all the, all the staff that made it happen. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tatum?
I'll echo that. Maybe the public obviously doesn't know, but we had a, it's okay to talk about that. Yeah, we had a very large water leak over the, today's Tuesday, over the week, a week ago, right, Dr. Weisong, maybe 10 days or so ago? And, you know, it appears here that nothing has changed, but we don't really understand behind the scenes what it took to get, you know, to keep business going as normal, to get all the agenda items done as if nothing had ever happened. So, we did call Servpro in, and apparently, you know, it's like it never happened, but they did some cleanup, but the employees obviously put this together. You know, had I not known that actually that had happened, it would have appeared to me that business is as normal, and that's, you know, a dedication to you guys and your professionalism and your work ethic, everybody, and the staff below, you're getting it done. So, thank you so much for that. So, that's great. Let's see here, I was at Sammlet Elementary, I think, earlier this Monday, was it? Right, was it Monday? Yeah. And so, what I saw there, actually, along with the meals, was VPK, and the more I see VPK, the more I'm a big fan of it. I think that it's a really good way to get children oriented over the summer, if they're going to go into kindergarten, it's like a pre-kindergarten prep program. It just is something good for children to do over the summer, to train their minds and the pre-academic skills that they need, and also their hearts, and then, their social skills together. I was there with Dr. Weisong, and he actually, we both commented how well-behaved, you know, these children were, and so, I thought something good is going on there, so I would encourage VPK for every parent and every family out there that can get it, and that we go out into the community and try and find families that could take advantage of VPK, good for their, if they choose, it's voluntary, that's what the V stands for, but it's good for their kids, and it'll help them academically as they progress into our school system, so that's great. So, that's that. And then, my safety tips, number one, stay hydrated again, it's hot out there. And then, number two, so I was at Publics today, and I was walking out to my car after getting some things, and this young Lakewood Ranch High School student backs into my truck. But luckily, you know, it's a pickup truck, and there's a little bit of paint damage, and he's 17, and I'm, he's like, "Oh, I'm so sorry," you know, I'm like, I looked at it, I'm like, "All right, I'm not going to call the insurance," you know, it's a pickup truck, you know. So, anyway, but the point is, is that, so then, he was trying to back his car up so we could have a little talk, you know, because he was about ready to drive away, and I was like, "Son, you can't drive away from, you know, an accident, it's not a good habit pattern to get into." So, he almost hit another car while he was backing up, because I think he was a little discombobulated. So, I stopped, like, "Stop!" All that to say is that backing up is a dangerous part of driving, obviously. And if, you know, it took me till it was about 40, but if you can, pull into a slot, you know, if there are two slots like this, and you pull them, pull into the one so you can just drive out straight ahead and you don't have to back up, right? So, there's a little tip for all of us that backing up is dangerous, and if you can pull forward and just pull straight out, do that, and that'll save you from, you never know if it's raining and you miss somebody. And actually, now that I think about it, there was a very sad situation that happened at the Air Force Academy when I was stationed out there. There was a very elderly, small lady, petite, maybe 4'11" or so, and there was a mother, and she was at the post office, and she had two kids in the back, and she had like a SUV that was up really high, and she was in a hurry, and her kids were kind of misbehaving, and she just backed up quickly and hit the lady, took her out, you know? So, kind of, you know, jesting about this a little bit with the young man at Lakewood Ranch High School, but it's important. Be careful when you're backing up, and if you don't have to back up, go straight ahead or take the long way around, you just might save yourself or somebody else. Okay, on to more pleasant things. Let's see, MTC graduations, we had those since the last board meeting, and that was really good, and the more I watched that again, the more I'm encouraged to see that people that go there usually have a job when they get out, you know? And you can read in the, I like to read the Wall Street Journal, and a lot of times you'll be, there's an article in there every week or so, every 10 days, about college graduates without jobs, you know? And then, everybody from MTC comes out with a job, you know? So, people that want to go to college and need to go to college, great, but I just want to encourage everybody to know that MTC is really viable, and that there are so many trades, jobs out there, and it's not just, you know, what your traditional trades are, there's high-level mechanical, equipment operation, and very technical things that are going on there that you can do, no doubt about that. And then, you come out with your skills, you get your apprenticeship done, you do your job for a couple of years, and you can actually own and start your own company probably about the age of 30. So, that's really something that I think parents should be looking at. And I too would like to thank Laura and Danielle and whoever else put this together. Welcome, Mr. Penley, and also the technical staff back there. We know you're back there, we can't see you, but all this works because you're back there doing your job. And like Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perk?
Okay. To tell on to your safety item, being short, I often walk between trucks and no one sees me, so watch out for the little people. There's advantages, I can walk under the mirrors instead of running into them, so that's the truth, and there's advantages, you get to stand in front of tall people, so. And to, yeah, and to your point about MTC and getting a job and coming right out of there, I don't often go get hair and nails done, I'm not that girly, but I did a week or so ago, and the girl that I went to for nails actually came from MTC about seven years ago, and I just thanked her so much for what she was doing, that it's, she had a passion. Like I said, I don't get it done very often, because I usually get disappointed in the person doing it, but this girl was so good. Was it easy to, I'll just say that, she was so good at it, and I was happy to do that too. So, yeah, MTC, just to go back on that, was, when I ran into her, and I've run into other people and ask them, "Where do they go to school for a beautician or whatever?" And if they say MTC, I say, "Well, thank you for staying local, thank you for staying here." So, anyway, since we did, since we met last, we've had some staff members who passed away, and I want to say for myself as a board member that our heart goes out to your families from us to you. So, I did want to say that. And we also have some retirees, one notably that has a 30-year span, that is a, I think was a kindergarten teacher. I want to say thank you to everyone who's retiring from our district, and congratulations to those who are coming into our district, because that's what I say up here all the time, we're not just educating kids, we're building careers. So, and with that, I also have, I just had a question with the resignation of Mr. Hartman. Part of the frustration with keeping members there, we did have somebody that applied, and we reached out to that individual, and they never responded back. So, if your interest is served, you know, put your name in, the chair will reach out to you, and try to be respectful and respond back. I know that also she's asked for some information. I hope that the district gets back with her on the requested items that she wants. Other than that, we have had a nice time off, I'll say, from the last time. I didn't make it to the breakfast, had a other appointment that I couldn't get away from, but I think our workshop is the 25th, correct? Thursday, the 25th? Okay, all right, I wanted to make sure of that. And then, our next special meeting is the 30th. Am I correct in that? All right, because I think you said the 23rd, and I'm like, "Whoa, wait, it's something like that's today." So, other than that, we do have summer graduations this week as well at Southeast High School. Looking forward to that. And we're just busy, busy, busy in the summer break. You think we're just sitting, but we're not. There's a lot of moving parts going on to get the schools, I mean, if you just look at our HR material, there's a lot of moving parts that goes on during the summer, people leaving, people coming on, and to the HR department, I can't thank them enough. I can just imagine all of the work that they do behind the scenes to process new employees from a new bus mechanic to teachers, a bus driver, to teachers, and even support staff. So, I think it's been a great break, but we're going to get right back at it here real soon. That's all.
Thank you very much. I'll keep it brief. Thank you, staff, for everything you've been doing the past eight, 10 days. I know it's been brutal with everything here, so, everybody out there, thank you very much for what you do. Dr. Weisong and the staff, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Penley, welcome. I met you earlier, so glad you're here. Stay longer than eight months. Appreciate it. With, she has some turnover, she has some turnover. With that, we'll see everybody on Thursday, and have a good next couple of days. We adjourned. We adjourned.